The Cupertino Chamber of Commerce presents, City Council Candidate Debate 2016. Featuring the eight candidates running for Cupertino City Council, live from the Cupertino Community Hall. And now for tonight's moderator, Anjali Khosir.
Good evening. I am Anjali Khosir, the CEO for the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. I would like to welcome you all this evening to our candidate forum/debate. In 1954, the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce was founded to help with the incorporation of a new city that we would call Cupertino. The Chamber is proud to have been an active member of the dynamic community from the beginning and is excited to continue to promote a thriving and sustainable Cupertino. The vitality and health of our community can be profoundly impacted by its elected officials, which is why we are here tonight. This evening's topics have been provided by the members of the Chamber of Commerce, the majority of which are small businesses. I would like to thank our participant, our candidates, for the City Council to be out here today to participate in this debate. Earlier this evening, the candidates randomly selected topic questions and the order in which they would speak. The Cupertino Chamber of Commerce has a straightforward format. For each round, a candidate will initially present a two-minute statement on the selected topic. The other candidates will have one minute to clarify how their own views may differ or agree with the initial presenter. The initial presenting candidate will make concluding remarks on the topic for one minute. The format will continue until each candidate has had an opportunity to lead on a topic. Following all topics, each candidate will have an opportunity for closing remarks. Each of our candidates is running to be part of a team and is encouraged to respond to comments made by other candidates. So let's begin with the first question, and it goes to Mr. Val-Veltols.
Vitols.
Vitols.
Yes.
Thank you. The question is, "The state of California requires each city to identify locations for additional housing to meet the needs of the state's population growth. Talk about this state mandated allocation and how you would address housing."
Well, when I first read this, my question to them was, "Why are they doing this? Why are they mandating something for our community?" And then I have an interest in history. So, housing, in terms of housing, it's interesting to look at how the grid pattern was laid out. In the late 1700s, it was made a law that each township and city should create this grid pattern in the United States. And this is, for real estate purposes, it's easier to sell property and such. But there's inherent problems in this pattern too, because you're not dealing with nature, what you have with environment that you're working with. Okay, so there's an inherent problem right away. Another thing I do is look at, and I don't have the answers to this, but looking, some of the people have done some creative things in the United States. Davis, up there near Sacramento, they have a particular layout that is bike and pedestrian-friendly. They created it from scratch, so they didn't have to work with what we do right now. There's a lot of eco-villages. Note the village concept where they haven't mined the community, not in mind the developers and the real estate people and all that. So there's ways to do this. Again, it's a huge challenge, because it's what we have to work with. So my time is up, and I'll talk more later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs?
This is an issue I've thought a great deal about. I'm sure many of you are aware that Palo Alto has started capping commercial space. And the reason is because they're terrified of what will happen if they build too much commercial space and A-Bag comes in with housing mandates, because like Cupertino, they really don't have any land for more housing. So I've looked at this in terms of what is proposed at one development in Cupertino, where they're asking for 2 million square feet of office. And it's very important to look long-term and see what happens with 2 million square feet of office. Depending on whose number you believe, that's 10,000 to 20,000 more employees. A-Bag's about 1.4 housing units, one housing unit per 1.4 employees. So you've got thousands of new housing units that will contain thousands of new students with no new schools and no land for it. So we better get smart like Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fong?
Yes. Building housing and trying to address the needs of housing in the community is a very, very important thing. Many of the problems we suffer today, traffic, come from the fact that people can't live in the areas close to where they work. So it's very important, you know, the A-Bag, the RINA allocations, seek to try to create the ability to guide production of housing, to help allow people to commute less. I think an important part of that, and a recent change in the RINA model, has to do with the allocation of homes near transit, near mass transit areas. And that helps... I'm sorry here. I think I'm going to run out of time. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Fong. Going on to Mr. Sings.
Well, I think affordable housing is key. If you think about our values, education is a prime value here. And I've sought to find more affordable housing, in particular for teachers. At a starting salary of $60,000, new teachers struggle to afford to live here. Last year, the City Council approved some of the highest housing impact fees in the South Bay across all kinds of commercial development, not just housing, to help fund below-market rate housing. In the Hamptons, we got 30 new units for moderate-income households, which would be teachers. But beyond that, we simply can't address the housing jobs imbalance in Cupertino alone. We have an order of magnitude more housing being built to the south. We have to recognize that mobility, in fact, is the prime problem we face. So yes, we can build more housing, but fundamentally, it's a two-hour commute every day for our teachers from Morgan Hill, and we need to address that.
Thank you. And Mr. Barth?
So I believe that a family should not be obligated to spend more than 20% or 30% of their monthly income for their housing needs. And in this community, that means you have to have an income of somewhere between $11,000 to $12,000 in order to kind of live with your family, which is outrageous if you ask a young person like me, who one day has to rent or buy my own place in this community. So I am a firm supporter of increasing housing opportunities in Cupertino. It's interesting that the California Department of Housing and Community Development has noted that with more high-density mixed-use housing, we can see an almost 30% to 40% decrease in traffic in communities, because that's less cars being used on the road. So I definitely support increasing housing opportunities, including mixed-use developments in Cupertino, to not only reduce traffic, but increase affordable housing opportunities for the future generation. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are back to Mr. Vitols, so he can round up this question, finish off.
Thank you. So there's the creative ways that we can use to create our own position, basically, in terms of all these challenges that we face. You know, I'm not for breaking any laws or regulations that are handed down to us from up above there, but you know, these things are, that's why I asked initially, these things are done for a purpose, and they're not always for our benefit, for the community's benefit. So the challenges we face in housing or anything else are something that we can create as a community, we can do our own, create our own position, you could say that, to address these things, because they're unique to our community and our environment. So what is handed down to us is something that may not be relevant even to what we're dealing with.
Thank you. Going on to our second question, to Mr. Schaffs. "The Cupertino library is one of the busiest in the county. The least expensive option to provide additional parking is to pave over the cricket field next to the library. Parking garages of any type are far more expensive. As a council member, what solution would you support?"
Well, I prepared 33 pages of policy papers, and I didn't think about the cricket field. First of all, it's not just cricket. This afternoon, when I was driving home, there was a big volleyball tournament there. I would definitely oppose paving over the cricket field for a parking lot. I mean, that is just insane. Now, also today and yesterday, I went and read the Cupertino budget, not all 897 pages of it, but quite a bit of it. And yes, a parking garage is more expensive, but there's a lot of things in that budget that I think we could move around and come up with the money to build a parking garage. There's other solutions for parking at the library as well. Right now, there's no secure bicycle parking. It would be great if we had either valet bike parking or bike lockers, so people were more comfortable riding their bikes to the library. There's also the issue, there's no good bike route to the library. There's no bike lane out on Torre until you get past Rodriguez towards Lawson. And we definitely could do something to increase bicycle access to the library and encourage people not to drive here. Personally, I live about a five-minute walk from the library, so I don't drive there on most occasions. But I can't talk about this for two minutes, but I'm definitely opposed to paving over the cricket field and in favor of building a parking garage if that's the only parking solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Fong.
Yes, I'm also opposed to widespread paving over of the field. For, I think that one of the things that can be most productive in trying to improve our ability to go to the library, which is a very important resource in the town, is to try to work on alternative paths and safer routes to get you to the library from all over town. In particular, Steve has mentioned that there are challenges from the east, there are challenges from the west as well. Coming down McClellan is a very challenging road to ride down safely. Fortunately, the 2016 Bike Plan is trying to identify paths around town that will help circulate and get us to the civics. So we've already taken an important step there. But trying to do that, creating the ability to have things like bike valet and perhaps a shuttle as well, you know, I mean, obviously, there's been some discussion of major shuttle services, but those things can all help lighten the traffic, parking problem at the library.
Thank you. Mr. Sings?
Well, I'm an advocate for the Civic Center Master Plan that the Council passed in late 2014. We need to move forward to that project for a whole variety of reasons, community meeting space. But you know, back in 2015, we recognized that in prior five years, we'd had over 100 bicycle accidents in Cupertino, including two fatalities. And I took the mayor's challenge from the U.S. Department of Transportation. We put three miles of green paint down, were recognized as one of three cities most improved by the end of the year. And in beginning of 2015, we also kicked off an ambitious new plan, which has actually specified bikeways and a master plan all over town. So that can relieve some of the parking congestion here and the need for parents to have to bring their kids from school to the library, you know, at the end of the day and then back again. So our kids will be healthier if we can get them biking around town and provide safe bikeways, going beyond paint to actually building protection, a barrier to cars.
Thank you. Mr. Bravat?
I would not support paving over the cricket pitch either, and I have many friends who play on that pitch on a weekly basis, so I know how much that means to them. I think we need to work with the surrounding community to understand how they deal with the library traffic and how we can work together to reduce that traffic in the community, because they are the people who see this every day and can really help us with traffic solutions, as opposed to other members of the community who may not live near the library and experience it every day. And I definitely believe what some of the candidates have said in terms of encouraging people to ride their bike to the library, I think that's one of the most important ways in order for us to reduce traffic and that we don't need to build more parking. That's not necessarily the answer, but we need to provide them with alternative methods to getting to the library, one of which is biking, and provide them with safe parking locations for their bikes, so they're comfortable doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitols?
Oh, I would open it up again to the kids and to the youth for some of these answers that we're looking for. And yes, I'm not in favor of something like that, paving over some more green space that we have. And there'd also be new technologies coming out. I mean, cars will be eventually dated. I mean, already, there's cars that run on water, there's flying vehicles that fly through the air. I mean, there's all kinds of things that are out there that, if we have money in the budget, we can start commissions to look at these things. I mean, if we're a forward-thinking community supposedly, we don't have to stay in the box here. We can think for the future, because there's things out there.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs, would you like to complete this?
Don't pave over the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Moving on to the third question, which is from Mr. Fong. "Traffic around schools is one of the most difficult local traffic issues. There has been studies or discussions of shuttles, closing streets, creating car-free zones around schools, which just pushes the problem into surrounding neighborhoods. How would you address traffic around schools?"
Thank you. I actually live in the, what would be called the tri-school area. My son attends Montevista High and went to Kennedy, which is really kind of ground zero for problems, you know, on Bub. There have been many efforts in the past to try to address the issues of safety, and of course, unfortunately, there was a fatality in that very area just a year and a half ago, two years ago, I guess, at this point. This is really a challenging problem. It's a partnership problem between the city and schools, and one of the many areas where the boundaries of the schools, the schools control the land up to the boundary of the schools, and beyond that, it becomes a city issue. So for instance, today, crossing guards are a responsibility of the city. There's not something that the schools are able to do, because they don't have jurisdiction over the roads. So working, trying to create a closer, more effective relationship between city and schools is something that's very important to try to address this problem. This is an area where I think I'm particularly qualified from two different standpoints. One, that I have a very close relationship with the schools. I have the endorsements of all 10 of our school board trustees, as well as many of the administrators. So I believe that I can help bring together the right people to have an effective discussion about how we might address those issues. I've also been very active as a charter member of the Safe Routes to School Task Force, which actually brings together school, the school, city, and public safety groups as well, and looking at solutions, which include education, evaluation, engineering, which includes things like the green lanes, and trying to create a safer path. So I believe that all these things together will help, can help create a safer environment for kids to come to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sings?
Well, we frankly have plateaued. We've had lots of teen commission programs and other things. So in trying to really move this forward, we've looked outside of Cupertino at a success story in Palo Alto, where they've been very successful in moving more kids to walking and biking, walking school buses and these sorts of things. We hired Chelsea Bicklin, that you may know, who is driving an aggressive process with our schools now, meeting intensively with teachers and parents. So we're committed to upping that number. So it's going to take a combination of physical improvements and infrastructure, really safe ways to relieve anxiety, and then education, because bikers don't always bike safely. And so we need all of these things to make it safer. And when we do all these, we will get less congestion around our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Bravat?
So I think one of the most important things while talking about school traffic is to convey the message to parents that their kids walking or biking to school actually saves them time and their kids' time. And I know this, because I was a student at Montevista High School. And by the second week, I had noticed that if I walked or biked to school, I got there and half the time it would take me, as opposed to having my parents drop me off all the way at school. So I think it's really about educating parents. And I know my dad used to always tell me, "It's a really emotional thing to have, drop off your kids to school every day and pick them up. It's kind of, you feel responsible as a parent." But I think it's important for us to explain to parents that they're being more responsible by letting their kid walk or bike to school, by being more environmentally friendly and making their kids more independent. I think another thing that really worked for my friends was picking areas nearby the schools where they could drop off and then walk with their friends. And that really encourages people to not drive to school when they can walk with their friends and have drop-off locations where they can meet up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitols?
Well, like Rod said, you know, he's working with a woman about this, you know, starting something, you know, some action. But I want to break the mold a little bit here and just, I'm not sure if I'll get a chance to say this, but you know, air, food, and water are really something that we should be looking at. There's a lot of issues here and challenges in the community, but hey, you know, these other things are going on all around us, and these are directly affecting our safety, our children's safety. It's not, you know, these things could be taken care of, they're just issues, you know. There's more on the plate here than, and I encourage everybody to look at, do their own research and investigation about these things, air, food, and water, because these are crucial to our survival. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs?
Well, this is one of my pet peeves. I could talk for an hour on this. When we moved to Cupertino, our kids went to Eaton, the traffic was just horrible, and it was made worse when the city removed traffic calming devices. And I talked to the former director of Public Works back then, Bert Viskovich, who had installed them, and he was very disappointed that the council had done this, because it made walking and biking to school much more dangerous. We can't hire enough police to patrol everything. We need to put in traffic calming around the schools. The other issue is, our schools were never designed for the quantity of students that are going there. That's why we have massive numbers of portables at so many of the schools. There used to be a lot more schools and a lot fewer children per school, and the traffic pattern was designed for that. I'm not sure how we fix that problem, but one thing we don't do is add tens of thousands of more students to the existing schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fong, if you could please close this.
Yes. So though I think there are two parts, in particular, education is an important part here, and it's education not only for the kids, for them to be able to travel safely to school, but for the parents. An important part of this is to get to a realization that if you perceive, if a parent perceives it as dangerous for their kid to come to school on their bike or to walk, then they will drive them, and that creates the traffic, which then makes it unsafe for young kids to ride and bike. So there really needs to be a discussion there, a discussion where people think about this and realize that this may be something where there's an opportunity to change. I think doing things like drop-off points have been, there's a concern that that will push this problem out into the neighborhood, but as we distribute this over a greater amount of space, it actually, I think, will be quite a workable solution. So I really believe education can make a big difference with this, and that's a top priority for Safe Routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are moving on to Mr. Sings. This question is, "The Cupertino City Council consistently has some of the longest meetings of any city in the Bay Area. A unique aspect of the council agenda is that people who have business on their agenda but wait for a potentially significant number of people who are talking about anything but their agenda. How would you improve these meetings?"
Okay, so this is not unique to Cupertino. The Brown Act applies to all local agencies across California, and I will tell you, Sunnyvale and Palo Alto compete well with us for longest meetings. You know, the Brown Act requires we give every speaker an equal amount of time, including subjects not on the agenda. At the Air District on which I serve, we regularly get 50-plus speakers, and so we will regularly move, if we have more than eight cards, we'll regularly move all the rest of them to the end of the meeting. And we tend to lose a quorum toward the end when it gets to be two or three in the afternoon. So this is not unique. And we've tried this technique here, and I think we have substantially improved our meeting length in Cupertino this year. We allow three minutes per speaker. Some agencies vary that and cut it down to even 60 seconds when they have a lot of speakers. We've chosen to be liberal about that. But you know, why are so many people coming to talk to us in agitation about things? We have a lot of anxieties about growth. We have core anxieties, and we have to have forums outside the formal council chamber with processes that work that deal with these anxieties. And those anxieties basically center around school impact as we grow, and they deal with traffic congestion as we grow. I have deep respect for the Fremont Union High School District's process in getting a Citizens Commission together, led by Min Lee, who runs our Leadership 95014 program. And in that process, 38 residents, many of them real skeptics of things like believing school demographers, are sitting down and doing the math and trying to understand how to fix declining enrollment at Lindbrook. And the school has, the school district let that process go for some time. I think we need to do better as a city in dealing with these core anxieties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bravat?
I think we need to provide the community with another place to talk about their concerns with the city council in the community, as opposed to just a city council meeting twice a month. So this can be done in various forums, such as commissions, which we have, and it's important to educate the voters about the commissions and to restore faith in the commissions, because oftentimes, I've heard in the last couple of years that city council disregards commissions or commission decisions, and that's really not what we want to do as a community. We want to accept the commissions and use them as a tool to benefit. And I think another strategy that we employ in college, and that's very beneficial, is office hours, an office hour-type environment, where citizens can come in once or twice a week to whoever city staff is there and talk about their concerns or ask any questions they have, and those can be forwarded, and they can help them outside of the city council meeting, which really reduces the burden on the meeting and lowers the amount of time that these meetings take, so we can be more efficient and get the business of the council through an efficient amount of time.
Thank you. Mr. Vitols?
You know, I don't think there's any law or regulation about this, but we could take this table down and, you know, get the chairs in a circle here, and it'll have a conversation on the same level. I think that would do a lot for the psychological aspect of the city council sitting up here above everybody, and you know, they're the authorities, and you all there screaming at us to, you know, to change this or that or enact this or that. So psychological, it's a psychological position here, we're talking about too, some of this. And so, you know, like we did in school, make our circle here, and we just talk. And that way, everybody, I think, would get more, especially the public, would get more of a chance to really like talk face-to-face with somebody instead of like up there, you know, somebody up here. So that's a good start.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs?
I was here at that infamous 5:00 AM meeting, because there were so many speakers upset. And democracy isn't always fun, and sometimes it takes a long time, and that's the way it is. I would not cut back on the amount of time per speaker. There could be some changes in the way, in the order of when speakers speak, and we could discuss that. There's also the issue, a lot of people show up with things that aren't really appropriate for the city council that could be handled in other ways. I know last week, I called the director of Public Works, because trucks were illegally parking in the bike lane by Main Street doing deliveries. He immediately took action on that, as did the sheriff. I called code enforcement today about illegally placed political signs in front of Main Street, and they said they would go and pick them up. So if we can move some of these issues to an appropriate city department, it would reduce the number of upset people that show up at the council meeting to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fong?
Yes, there are a number of changes procedurally that can help the city council meetings be more effective for the residents. I don't believe in shortening the time. I think that people... I think that people beforehand will have comments that they want to prepare, they will prepare for that time, and they ought to have that opportunity. For items on the agenda, that may lead to a very, very long meeting where there are many, many speakers, and that is the obligation of the council to hear them. So that shouldn’t change, and there isn’t really—and I don’t think that we want it to. One of the big challenges we’ve had, though, is that non-agenda items, open communication people will often come and speak there, and I think there—that is an issue, and I do believe it becomes very difficult to do the business of the city when we have that—when we have a long, 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 open communication period. So I do believe the process that has been used here, where we select a few cards to be up in front and do the rest at the end, give them their full opportunity to speak, is probably the fairest way to do that. And it requires—it really requires some better education about how to effectively communicate with the council.
Thank you. And Mr. Sings, would you like to complete us?
Yeah, so I would point out that we have a new process that seems to be working pretty well this year, that I described in the beginning. And, you know, residents that have questions or concerns about what’s going on in their neighborhood or anything else are welcome to email us. So I probably receive five, 10 emails a day from residents. Very often, I’m forwarding them on to appropriate city staff because I’m that point of contact. Sometimes they come to all council members, sometimes they come to just one of us, but you can rest assured that if you send queries to us as, you know, council members in the city, we do forward them on to appropriate city staff. And our city staff is very good about sitting down with resident groups and others who, you know, have real concerns. So we try to hook you up with folks that can appropriately answer these questions, and I would say, yes, we also have commissions that are a great sounding board for things in the city, and the city council does pay attention. I certainly pay attention to the recommendations of those commissions. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, moving on to our last question, and this goes to Mr. Bargwad. Economic diversity contributes to the health of our community, yet a single company represents a significant portion of the city’s tax base. As a council member, what would you do to help small businesses in Cupertino, or should Cupertino be a large business community?
Well, correct me if I’m wrong, I want to address the elephant in the room, the large taxpayer is Apple. And I think—we love Apple. I mean, most of people I talk to from out of this area, the first thing they tell you is, “You’re from Cupertino.” Well, I’ve seen that on my iPhone or my MacBook, and it’s time we embrace Apple as opposed to looking at it as an enemy. However, I come from a small business family, and I understand the need for small businesses and the necessity to help them thrive in a community. And I think we should be working with Apple to encourage their employees to spend their money in small business locations within Cupertino and encourage shop local programs through the city to really boost small businesses in our community. Having—I think having competitive places for these businesses to do business is really important as well. We can’t allow them to be paying outrageous rents in rundown locations that they can’t afford or are not safe for them. So I think upgrading the infrastructure in Cupertino and really providing them with a competitive place to do business is going to be very important in retaining these small businesses in Cupertino. I’m a big supporter of $15 minimum wage, and I think it’s very important for that to be implemented. However, I think we need to not forget about small businesses that are affected by an increase in minimum wage to $15, because when we think of a business, we don’t often think about the fact that there’s a family behind that business and there’s kids who live off of that business’s income. So it’s important for us to always look out for the small business while making decisions on minimum wage or on infrastructure development in Cupertino, because they are the real backbone of our community. And I think it’s interesting to point out that in Mountain View, if you go to Castro Street in the evening time, you see it’s packed, and all the small businesses are doing well because of Google’s employees are encouraged to go there and spend their money and spend their time. So as opposed to looking at Apple as trying to alleviate ourselves from the pressure of Apple, we need to work with Apple in our community to see how we can encourage integration, because Cupertino is Apple and Apple is Cupertino. They’ve chosen to place their home in Cupertino, and it’s time that we work with them for a more prosperous future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitals?
Well, yeah, Apple is—nothing against Apple, they’ve got some good ideas, they’ve done their homework, they’re huge, they’ve marketed themselves, you know, we can learn from Apple. So at the same time, we don’t want to let these ma and pa, you know, businesses go under because of the big predators like Apple, you know, and other corporations that are just eating up by their money and power and the lobbying abilities, they’re just eating up everything that’s small and, you know, making conglomerates and taking control of everything. So, hey, that’s something the city council could do, you know, they could subsidize or do something to encourage or to support the small businesses instead of, you know, doing what they are. Do your research with Apple.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs?
One thing that would be wonderful, and it’s up to Apple now, of course, is if they were nice enough to not force Cupertino to send 35% of the sales tax we’re entitled to back to Apple. It’s not a lot of money for Apple, but it’s significant for Cupertino. Right now, I think the biggest problem in Cupertino is the lack of retail. We’ve lost so much retail, so we’re too dependent on business taxes and business-to-business sales taxes. Since I’ve lived here since 1999, we’ve just seen shopping center after shopping center decimated when new owners come in and they raise the lease rates and they evict the existing tenants that wanted to stay. And this has occurred at Cupertino Village, The Oaks, Valco, of course, but smaller locations like Vivi’s over by the post office. We lost our car dealership and built a supermarket. Now, Whole Foods is great, but food isn’t taxable, there’s no sales tax on it unless you’re buying wine or soda or prepared food. We lost all our department stores, of course. We need to stop our residents going out of town to shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fung?
Well, greater economic diversity is always better in any environment, because that helps you weather any change that may come along. I could certainly speak to technology companies. I used to work across the street doing consulting work for a startup that was in the buildings, just literally across the street. Small companies love being here, but it is very, very hard because of the very high costs, and this is the same problem you hear over and over again, the very, very high costs of doing business here in Cupertino. So they—we loved being here, proximity to Apple is great, and then if you can get a cluster of smaller companies or different companies, the proximity to each other becomes a very strong synergistic effect that makes these companies more successful, and you see that in Mountain View. But I think the challenge really is office availability. It’s very hard to compete with Apple for space, so anything that we can do to try to help, and that maybe include subsidies, you know, allow incentives for incubators, for owners to have incubator space, or even have subsidies from the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sings?
Well, Cupertino is proud to be the home of Apple. We know that Apple’s economic impact radiates well beyond its campuses and its employees. When Apple Campus II was approved by the council in late 2013, surveys showed at that time overwhelming support by our residents. Now, having said that, we do need more economic diversity in Cupertino, and we don’t want to be a single-company town, and I expect the opening of the new campus will actually free up some of the Class B office space to allow businesses to grow here. I highlighted some of them that had moved out in my 2015 State of the City speech. Barracuda, Portino, Charge Point, moved to Campbell, Los Gatos. You know, Esplunk is going to move down to new office being created at Santana Row. So we do need to make space for these companies, and we also need to preserve retail and restaurant space. I was heartened that Target is going to make a major investment in renovating the large center that we have here in Cupertino, one of their best-performing stores.
Thank you. And Mr. Bargwad, would you like to complete this?
Yeah, well, I think it’s safe to say that all of us support small businesses in this community, and I think it’s—I want to take this time to address a really interesting topic that comes up in terms of retail space in Cupertino. Now, if we drive to Palo Alto, we have Stanford Shopping Center, and if we drive a little bit north—I mean, if we drive north up on 280, we have Valley Fair Shopping Center. And I think with all of these big malls in this area, we really need to look at Valco and see what else can we do as opposed to having just a retail environment over there. And this is coming from a younger person who has—in my 10 years in Cupertino, I’ve been to Valco a handful of times to actually shop, because the choices weren’t there and the selection wasn’t there, and I was willing to drive that extra mile. So I think it’s important for us to take a turn away from retail in this community and work with small startups and small businesses who want office space to really expand their business in Cupertino, to ensure that they’re building long-term businesses, as opposed to retailers who come and go as seasons come and go in retail locations. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we are going to start with our closing remarks, and we’ll ask Mr. Vitals to go first. And you have two minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so, technology, energy, the financial systems, all these systems are rapidly changing in our world. So, my—again, my recommendation to you is to do your own research, like, investigate what’s really going on in the world, because it affects you directly. It really does. The choices and decisions you make are, you know, especially about the food and the water and the air quality, these are directly affecting you. So, being real about what’s going on in the world, just investigate, look at—the—go to the internet and look at—the situations, you know. It’s not everything that you see on the news, there’s more to the picture that is going on. And then also, my position would be the bigger picture. So I’m looking always at the bigger picture, not just the issues. You know, you can go home and watch your sports and your presidential, you know, debates and all that, but there’s more going on in this world than you can even imagine. So I just encourage you to get out there and, you know, think outside the box. It’s not just about politics or anything, you know, your job, traffic, there’s just so more, there’s so much more. So that’s my closing statement, just get out there and be real with yourself and do your own research. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schaffs?
Values and vision are the key differences I see in the candidates for this race. We can’t keep just taking an extremely short-term vision of things and approve things that have negative long-term impact on Cupertino. It’s been popular for some developers to label anyone that opposes their project as NIMBYs—not in my backyard. One former mayor labeled us as bitter Cupertino instead of better Cupertino, which was kind of a low blow. And two other former mayors sued residents, including me, when we wrote an accurate ballot description for the ballot booklet. That case is still being appealed, we’ll see what happens. So I think voters need to see who will look out for the best long-term interests of Cupertino. It’s not developers, and I’m sorry, but it’s not the Chamber of Commerce, it’s not political action committees, and it’s not people that refuse to take a principled stand on all the issues. John Muir said, “When we try to pick out anything by itself, we find it hitched to everything in the universe,” and this is true at the local level as well. Development, housing, schools, transit, and the environment are all intensely interrelated. But the entities that seek to profit at the expense of others desperately don’t want citizens to make those connections and think about those interdependencies. I hope if I’m elected to change that whole paradigm and convince fellow council members to take a long-term systems view and work towards the vision that residents have for Cupertino. I think we want to remain a suburban town with growth that is sensible and controlled, with great attention paid to creating the infrastructure to support that growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fung?
I’d like to thank the chamber for hosting this event. Effective communications are really the greatest challenge in any kind of campaign that I’ve been involved in, running for this office, greenlining a project at work, or trying to increase parent donations for the PTA. So I genuinely appreciate the chamber and our other community organizations for giving us this platform to speak from. I hope that you’ll remember one thing about me when it’s time to vote, my personal dedication to keeping Cupertino a beautiful community for our families today and in the future. My dedication springs from 30 years as a Cupertino resident, and I’ve been active, engaged across the city and the schools. I don’t watch from the sidelines, but I have a long history of jumping in, dedicating my time and energy to serving on commissions and committees to affect positive change and to deliver tangible results. You’ve heard my voice at council meetings, and you’ve seen my words on Nextdoor, where I try to bring facts and reason toward often emotion-driven discussions. That dedication extends to my personal commitment to listen to all parties and seek true community consensus. Finding common ground requires bidirectional discussion, something that’s not part of our public hearing system, but I pledge to continue to make myself available, to have the discussions we need to have, and to honestly explore all opinions, just as I’ve done in the past. I’m committed to increasing public engagement and trust in our city government. Beyond being a faithful representative, I pledge to be an advocate for the system of —for our systems of government and to be an educator on how those systems work. People come to City Hall with a desire to affect change. I will work with all parties to help them understand the system, set expectations, act effectively, and get better results. Even with the warts, I believe representative democracy and our public process are the best ways to make good public policy, and I want to feel them to feel confident that it serves us fairly. Regardless of the outcome of this election, I’ll still be there, working to keep Cupertino great, but I hope to do more for you on the city council. I respectfully ask for your consideration this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sings?
Well, I appreciate the chamber and those of you who chose to tune into this instead of some old ballgame tonight. Like you, my family and I love Cupertino, and it continues to be a highly desirable place to live and to work. You know, an effective council member brings a good head and heart to the job, as well as passions, and for me, those passions, my priorities are education, transportation, and the environment. As a parent, I share your desire to prepare our kids for a world of enormous change and opportunity. I’ve been a robotics mentor, a YMCA father-daughter leader, a Girl Scout volunteer, and a scoutmaster. And as we grow, I work to keep our schools strong. They continue to rank among the best in the country, and development should strengthen our schools by providing affordable housing for teachers and community benefits, more than making up for impact they might create. Having managed two startups from infancy to success, I know what it takes to create a vision, build consensus, and then make things happen. And you know what? We face major challenges as we accommodate regional growth that’s brought by the booming economy. And regional growth requires regional solutions to things like traffic congestion. As your mayor in 2015, I reached out to neighboring mayors, and together, we negotiated major funding to improve our highway interchanges and roads and to bring new transit options. We also kicked off an ambitious new bike plan, which was jump-started with $2 million in this fiscal year, that will create safer and protected routes to schools, jobs, and shopping. As an environmental leader, I spearheaded creation of and chair the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, bringing competition to PG&E next year with less expensive, carbon-free electricity for residents and businesses in 10, 11 cities here. And I’m fighting for clean air, a cleaner air at the Air District. I’m one of only two representatives of the 15 cities of the county, and if you share my priorities, I’d ask that you vote for me on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bargwad?
I want to start off by thanking the chamber for hosting this and Anjali for moderating this debate. We always boast in this community about the wonderful schools that we have and the wonderful product of these schools, and I am a product of this community. I graduated from Kennedy and Monovista High School, and I have a unique vantage point that none of my competitors do of growing up in this community and seeing it grow and develop. There’s many small changes that we can make to the lives of youth to really empower them, and that’s the forefront of my campaign, it’s youth empowerment and how we can make the lives of the youth in this community better and empower them for the future—for the future of their future and how they can give back to the community in Cupertino. Running for city council is more than a job or a position for me, it’s really an opportunity for me to make the community that I will raise my family in one day a better place, and that’s why I want to get involved from a younger age. I’m sure many of you noticed that I’m much younger than many of the decision-makers in the city, I’m 20 years old, and I think that—I think that speaks towards a new perspective that I bring to the council, one from the millennial generation that is not there right now, and it’s very valuable in ensuring that we have that opinion so that when millennials want to move back to Cupertino, we’re a community that they really want to live in. About a decade ago in Campbell, a young person by the name of Evan Low decided to run for city council, and many people were skeptical back then of his lack of experience or his lack of dedication, and he’s proven to us—he’s proven to be one of the strongest legislators in our state, and he’s really proven that when you give young people a platform to stand on, we always shine and we always—we always show that we can really make change in our community. So I ask you guys to invest in this young youth from Cupertino and make history this November by electing the youngest member to the Cupertino City Council. You can learn more about my platform and my agenda at parthforcupidino.com. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight and hearing what I have to say, and hopefully I can earn your support for the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Let’s give everybody a big hand. [applause] Let's give everybody a big hand. I would like to thank you all again to participate in our forum, and I would like to remind the audience to please remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you again. This ends the forum.